Thanks very much. Good evening to everybody. Glad to be here. Yeah, you reminded me. My grandkids are older now, but when they were younger, particularly the girls, the middle girl, Sarah, who's now going to be 21 in a couple of months. She went to one of these meetings with me and I was already out of the legislature doing EPLC and somebody read one of those things and she said, "Grandpa, what does that mean?" It means I went to a lot of meetings. I've been going to more meetings since. I'm happy to do this. One, thanks to the League for its sponsorship of this whole series of programs, but especially this one that I have a chance to be a part of, talking about K-12 governance and the work of school boards. Especially this year when we're just a couple of months away from electing a couple thousand school board members in Pennsylvania. I do this, I've been doing this kind of program for different folks since 1999. Over the last probably six, eight years, I've been doing it for the, some of the League of Women Voter chapters around the state, down in the southeast. Several county chapters do this every two years in the spring. Targeted mostly candidates, but not exclusively. They get a lot of citizens who come in and do it. And so anyway, I'm happy to do it and cooperate with the League any time they choose to think of this subject. Just tell me very quickly, any of you on the school boards currently? Okay. People running for school board? Okay. And folks who had school board experience in the past? Yeah. Okay. All right, good. You know, I do this program with the understanding that people start in very different places. So for some of you, this is old stuff and for some of you, well, when I do this program for the League down in the southeast, it's usually six hours or spread over two days. And people go through it and at the end they say, "I don't want to do this." And that's a good thing. You know, they learn early on before they get elected or before they take up space there, that this is not what they want to do. And that's a reasonable conclusion. But again, I hope that I can share good information with everybody, although again, you start in very different places. We don't have a remote, so I've got to go over here and move this from time to time. I use this framework for practically every leadership program I do about education policy because it's intended to create some perspective or context for some of this work. We're talking today about the governance issue, which is really if we're talking about education policy, where folks ought to begin. And it is the question, who gets to make the decisions? And that's mostly what we're going to be talking about this evening. But it is followed then by these other points that, you know, often with one of our leadership programs, our fellowship program of EPLC, we'll spend a whole day on each one of these subjects. You know, the standards, academic standards, we call them today. The question is, what is it all about? You know, what are we hoping that kids get out of this experience? So now we articulate that usually in the form of academic standards. And then how do we know how we're doing? That's the assessment question. You know, that doesn't necessarily have to just be a test. Folks have all kinds of ideas about appropriate ways of assessing. And who you assess? Are we assessing the kid, the teacher, the school board, the district, the school building? That's part of the policy debate. Then the consequences, how do you get anybody to take us seriously? Now, I always remind folks, most folks now are familiar with the state assessment tests. In the earliest iteration of the state assessments, they were anonymous. It took kids like two seconds to figure out that one. There was no consequence. I don't have to put my name on here. I can put anything, any garbage on here. Educational capacity, we know more than ever before about how people learn and about how kids learn and how different we all are. We also know more than ever before about what works. And so that's the question, what works? And then, then and only then, do we get this question about finance? How do you pay for it? You know, frankly, so many people who run for school board or who serve on the school board, who go to the legislature, they start out promising never to increase taxes ever. I have zero respect for those folks. That is not the way you approach policymaking. You've got to figure out what you want to accomplish first and how you're going to get there. And if you decide that that's the goal and this is what it takes to get there, then you've got to have the guts to pay for it. If you want to change the goal, that's fine. If you want to change the pathways, that's fine. That can alter, but you've got to start with where are we trying to get? How are we going to get there? And then what are the financial consequences? And the alignment is just a reminder that this stuff ought to be aligned. You know, in so many places, we say, "This is the important stuff, but we don't want to pay for it." Or, "This is the important stuff, but we're going to spend our money over that." So just a reminder about the assessment stuff. And it keeps working. One of the reasons I find this to really be an interesting topic is it is here around education policy that we have this convergence of federal policy, state policy, and local policy. And it really makes it interesting and it makes it a really dynamic and also a very challenging item. The federal role, you know, folks have different opinions about what is, what ought to be, what are the consequences of the federal role. But this is just kind of a summary. There is no specific role assigned to the federal government in the U.S. Constitution, none at all. Way back in the seventies, so fifty years ago, when folks went to federal court to sue about the unfairness of systems related to funding, federal courts said, "Go see your state legislature. It's their business." And that's been pretty consistent. The exception to that might be a case like the area that I used to represent. I used to live in Wilkins Township. It was part of what was then Churchill School District. In the seventies, folks went into federal court. And long story short, they got the federal court to agree that the Pennsylvania system was unconstitutional. And they went in and they got into court and were accepted into court because the argument was around de facto racial segregation. And the federal court said, "That is our business." And as a result, after a very long trial, a very contentious trial, the federal court ordered the consolidation of five existing districts into what we now know as the Woodin Hill School District in the eastern part of Allegheny County. But that's the exception in terms of federal engagement. Now, again, they've been involved with special ed. The Elementary Secondary Education Act goes back to President Johnson in the sixties. It was part of Johnson's War on Poverty. Especially there's been this focus on at-risk kids. You know, we would know it as Title I typically. That's where most of the money is. And then another iteration, because Congress is expected to update the Elementary and Secondary Act occasionally. They're not always on time, but occasionally they do. During the Bush administration, it was No Child Left Behind. And we were, you know, folks know that title, if not some of the details about it. During the Obama administration, when Congress failed to act in a timely way to update the Elementary Secondary Act, the Obama administration through the Department of Education took the initiative with what was called the Race to the Top. And so they created a competitive environment for states and the school districts, mostly states, to earn money. Teacher preparation, I put that in there because that's a relatively new thing. It's not so new anymore, but you know, over the last ten years or so, the feds have started to get involved with the issue of teacher preparation. And they have basically done it with teacher preparation programs. They've begun to say to colleges, universities that have teacher preparation programs, here are some rules if you want to be eligible for certain kinds of things. In the case of colleges and universities and their students, if you want your kids to be eligible for federally subsidized loans, if you want your college and university to be eligible for other federal grants, et cetera. Every Student Succeeds Act, that's several years old already. The emphasis of that seems to have been, part of the seems to have been, put more authority, more flexibility to the states and school districts. And then of course, excuse me, over the last few years, last several years now, there's been an enormous amount of COVID money that has gone to the states and especially to the school districts. A good deal of flexibility there. The caveat is they got to spend it by a date certain. And what's going on in a lot of school districts, as well as states, is how do we spend this money in a meaningful way but don't commit ourselves to obligations once we hit this fiscal cliff where this COVID money goes away? And so school districts have been working in various ways, trying to invest in things that don't necessarily commit them to new bodies and a bigger payroll for the longer term. But the federal role, I said, no responsibility constitutionally. The influence is money. That's the lever they use. It's the same thing that they do around highway money. You want our federal money for your bridges and your highways, you're going to have a DUI law. You're going to have a seatbelt law. So it's the lever, the money is the lever that they use to get compliance with what are not mandates, but are expectations, because everybody takes the money. First and foremost, when we talk about all of this education policy stuff, it's important to remember that the state has a primary role. It's in our state constitution. It's in all fifty state constitutions. It's been in our state constitution in one form or another since 1790. And frankly, the language hasn't changed a whole lot. Now it says, this goes back to 1968, "Provide with maintenance and support of a thorough and efficient system of public schools to meet the needs of the Commonwealth." You know, the tricky thing here has been those words, "Meet the needs of the Commonwealth." For a long time, the court has been saying, "Well, we'll let the legislature decide what are the needs of the Commonwealth." And until very recently, they were not interpreting this to mean anything about the needs of kids or the rights of kids. We've got a significant change now with Supreme Court decision over the last couple of years. It says, "Our current system of funding schools and the resultant school system is unconstitutional because it denies fundamental rights to kids." So the landscape legally has changed dramatically in terms of how you interpret this language in the constitution. But what I just want to emphasize is, you know, this is historical. It's current. It creates authority, but most importantly, it creates responsibility as well. So it's not, you know, legislature can't say, "Well, we could do it. We might do it. We have the authority to do it." More recent interpretation is you've got to do it. It's a responsibility. So structure in Pennsylvania, 500 districts. Back in the late 1950s, we had a couple thousand school entities. The legislature created a new map of 500 school districts. We got to 501 with that federal court order in the seventies. And then within the last ten years, two districts in Beaver County voluntarily merged. And districts can voluntarily merge. Most, there are a lot that would like to merge with somebody. Nobody wants to merge with them. So, but that's how we got down to 500. The boards are elected in 499. It wasn't too many decades ago when it was 498 because the Pittsburgh Board was appointed at the time. But the legislature changed that at the request of local officials and the local legislative delegation. They're elected to four-year terms. There was a time when it was six-year terms. The, changed to four-year terms. I'm not getting into the whole history about it. It had a lot to do with creating more accountability on the part of boards. Part of the trade-off, there was a discussion at that time, this during my legislative days, there was some interest in more referendum questions, put everything on the ballot. And a lot of us believed and the majority believed that you don't put everything on the ballot. That's why we elect people. But to create more accountability, more opportunity for voters to make change if they saw fit, the terms were reduced to four years. Philadelphia Board is the one that's appointed. Occasionally, there's been some special state intervention. Way back in the 1960s, we had the state take over some districts. They would take over districts because they couldn't pay their bills. You could be completely screwing up the life of kids, but the state wasn't going to take you over. There was no interest in that. It was, can you pay your bills? And then the law changed. You know, with some of the federal stuff influencing it, but the thing was, the state law changed so that we created what were empowerment districts. This is back during the Governor Ridge administration. And it created another set of circumstances when the state would intervene. They didn't literally take over the district, but they provided extraordinary helps. They provided extraordinary expectations on the part of the district or the board of the district. So occasionally, we've seen state intervention. Point is, all of this stuff is a decision of the legislature. The legislature could decide that, "We're going to be like Hawaii. We just need one district in Pennsylvania." Bad idea. They could decide that we're going to be like Maryland and West Virginia and some other places, we're going to have county-wide districts. Personally, just my opinion, I think it is nuts that we have 43 school districts in Allegheny County. But I'm not a fan of county-wide districts. You know, this is a big state. There are counties that have a big mountain in the middle of it and it's just not very practical. But the consequence of so many districts, I think, is that we have in many instances, a pocket of poverty sit beside a pocket of wealth. And it depends on what side of the street the kid lives, that they have a lot of access or hardly any access. Kids in the Wilkinsburg School District, high school kids, now they go to Westinghouse in Pittsburgh. But while they were still their own school district, they didn't have an advanced placement course. You didn't have to go too many miles away where there were all kinds of advanced placement or honors courses available to kids. That's just one example of these silos, rich, poor, beside each other, with kids not all enjoying equal advantages. But again, all policy decisions by the legislature. Relationships, state government to K-12. Again, it's all established in our state statutes, which are done by the legislature and regulations that mostly are done by the State Board of Education. All of it is subject to change. I mean, the legislature could come in and do wholesale change tomorrow if it chose to. Generally, there's no municipal government role, even in a Pittsburgh or a, well, a Pittsburgh or pick any of the municipalities, large municipalities in our southwestern region. There are a lot of mayors that wish that they could control the district, especially where they're co-terminists and their interests are kind of co-terminists too, as well as the geography. But they don't have that authority under Pennsylvania law. The only exception that I can remember is no longer an exception, but for about a ten-year, for a ten-year period, the mayor of Harrisburg had the authority to appoint a special committee, commission, board that literally ran the school district in Harrisburg. That was a short ten-year window. It went away. Didn't result in dramatic changes, but that was one of the exceptions. Again, the legislature created districts, creates boards. My, you will remember Tom Gensel perhaps, the school boards. Tom is one of our EPLC board members now, but he was the national president of School Boards Association, executive director of the State School Boards Association. But when, he tells this story every year because we do programs together. When we were both young, he would come in and lobby me and explain that the school boards were all against mandates. I would explain to Tom that the existence of school boards was a state mandate. And so you've got to be careful about which ones you're hoping will go away. But again, the point is legislature has responsibility for all of that. Despite all of that, I will argue that in many ways, Pennsylvania is still a local-controlled state. And there is, that's why we're having this conversation today. There are really important responsibilities that are delegated to school boards. Around state governance, you know, if we were doing one of my six-hour sessions, it would take 10 minutes to everybody think about, you know, how are you affected? What's the scope of these state laws? The legislative statutes or the state board regulations? But in fact, the kids have got to go to school, beginner and dropout age. You know, to our embarrassment, it was only a couple of years ago when you didn't have to go to school till you were eight in Pennsylvania. The legislature finally got around to changing it to six. First came Philadelphia, they took the lead. And then a couple of years after that, they made it statewide. But standards, testing, the curriculum requirements, et cetera, et cetera. The taxing authority on the bottom, it is broad. That's the, that's the point in terms of state policy. So just a reminder, statutes done by the legislature, regulations done by the state board. I always kid folks, if you skip that grade or that class in fifth grade, would spend more time on the lawmaking thing and the 253 lawmakers. But nobody in this room skipped that grade or that class. The state board, again, state board's created by the legislature. Its authority is delegated by the legislature. Most of the board members are appointed by the governor. Because of a provision in Pennsylvania law, when I was chair of the Ed Committee, I also served as a member of the state board. The majority and minority chairs in the House and Senate, all four sit as full voting members by virtue of their office on the state board. On the bottom there, example of some of their work, academic standards. You think about it, and you know, I often cite this example too, but you know, why you delegate to the state board this responsibility for academic standards? Do you think it would be a good idea to have the legislature, as we know it, making up reading standards? Probably not. So it's appropriate that this stuff gets delegated to somebody else who does have to operate in the open. I mean, that was a debate 35 years ago about whether the state board should be done away with. At that time, Ike, and I still believe this, Ike came down and decided, "That idea to do away with state board, you're going to have somebody making these regulations, but they're going to make it in some closet somewhere rather than in public meetings with public accountability as is required by the law of the state board." Just a reminder, created by statutes. Folks serve six-year terms. So the idea is that they overlap with governors. The chair is appointed by the governor. The chair has to be a member of the state board that serves as chair at the pleasure of the governor. They do their work through two basic councils. Small staff, woman Karen Mulchano, who is the executive director of the state board. I hired Karen straight out of Millersville University. She came to work for EPLC, worked with us for nine or 10 years, went over to the state board as assistant. She's the executive director and at most she has two people working with her. So it is a small staff and the budget is dependent on the Department of Ed. There is, if you read this whole state budget, there is not a line item that says State Board of Education. They get their money from the Department of Education, which has implications over the longer term in terms of policymaking. You know, you've got a state board where the chair is appointed by the governor, but the Department of Education Secretary is involved in that discussion. There's a small staff that is dependent on some hiring by the Secretary of Ed. And the budget is dependent on the Department of Education. So it's an independent board, but independent with some caveats. And again, we could spend an hour talking about their authority and duties, but a couple of major things. Periodically, they develop a master plan for basic ed and then a master plan for higher ed. Question is, does anybody pay attention to it? The legislature requires them to do this. But there's nothing that guarantees the legislature will abide by it or pay attention to it or even honor its completion. Department of Ed, again, the legislature created a department, created a position secretary who serves as a member of the governor's cabinet. Governor appoints the secretary. I just point out that all of this structure I've just described varies from state to state. There are states where the state board is elected. There are states where the state commissioner or secretary is elected. There are states where the elected state board selects the Secretary of Education. So you know, we've got 50 states and probably 30 different variations of that governance structure at the state level. But the department develops policies. Often those policies are subject to adoption by the legislature or the state board. They have this job of administering and enforcing and administering funding. But that next to the last board, I want to emphasize that. Yeah, I've been doing this, going to Harrisburg for almost 50 years now. I've seen all kinds of secretaries. I've, I've seen very different approaches. And really depending on who is the governor. You sometimes see the department and the Secretary of Education act as the enforcer. And in other places, they're more the helper. They're administering, but they're there to help. They're an asset, a resource to work with school districts, work with boards, et cetera. So what that looks like in terms of administering and enforcing, I would suggest depends on the personalities and a lot on who is the governor and what is their attitude about K-12 and the work of folks in the field, whether it's the school board members or the school board or the teachers. But we're a strong executive state. Doesn't matter whether it's a Republican, Democratic governor. The governor in this state exercises the enormous influence over what's happening with education policy. Again, I already said, you can look at a good 25, maybe 35 different variations about what this structure and the relationships look like across the states. But in Pennsylvania, our governor appoints the Secretary of Ed, appoints most of the members of the state board. With, through the secretary, the hiring through the budget of the Department of Ed influences greatly what the state board does in terms of regulation making. So in Pennsylvania, it's really important, in my opinion, to pay attention to who's going to be governor because that suggests a great deal about what's going to happen around education policy, certainly at the state level. School directors are raised at four-year terms. We've got a couple thousand on the ballot this fall. And that's the same in a numbered years. About half the board is up every two years. In Pennsylvania, you can cross file. So I'm not sure what your circumstances are or those of you who've been on, but you can run as a Republican and a Democrat. You can be on both ballots. There's a whole process in terms of who can circulate your petitions and all that, but you can put your name on both ballots. You know, there occasionally is discussion. In fact, you know, within the last year, there's been discussion in Harrisburg about doing away with the cross filing. One legislator, and I'm quoting, said on the floor of the House, "We want to know whether they're Republican or Democrat." I'm not sure that's the best approach. School districts, most of these 500 districts around the state, excuse me, most of the districts around the country work best when they treat these education issues in a nonpartisan way. You know, folks aren't lining up where the rest of the party is, Republican or Democrat. So at least for the time being, and I don't think it's that great risk right now, you can cross file. And straight party was eliminated, straight party voting. You know, depending on whether you're in a strong Republican area and you like that, or a strong Democratic area and you like that, you know, both parties have benefited depending on the geography. But straight party voting, I'll just give an example. I will give an example. I won't mention his name, but we had a guy in my home district who got elected, I guess, four years ago. He got the lowest number of votes of anybody who was elected that fall. He had lived in the community only a short while. I won't say exactly how I feel about him because he's not here. But even the folks of his party got sick and tired of him. He lasted four months and left. That was a result of straight party voting. And that was the year before they did away with it. So on the subject of school boards, I've certainly have seen benefit in terms of the effects, the results of who gets elected to the school board and who gets to serve. effects, the results of who gets elected to the school board, and who gets to serve, and how they get there. Who can serve on a board, gotta be a citizen of Pennsylvania, gotta be good moral character, that's subject to court decisions. Gotta be at least eighteen, not when you follow, but when you are taking office. Many, many years ago, I helped the young men, I was young then, and had more time, did my legislative days, helped a young man who was class president in Wilkinsburg. He wasn't eighteen yet, he graduated, he still wasn't eighteen. He was the first African-American to be elected to the Wilkinsburg School Board. He took office shortly after he turned eighteen that year. So, the point is, you gotta be eighteen when you're taking office, not when you start to run. You gotta be living in a district for a year, can't be employed by the district, can't be a school, a school director where you're employed. And the point there is, you can't be your own boss. It's pretty, it's not very complicated. If you can live in this place and, excuse me, and be a board member where you live, of course, and work somewhere else, that's allowed, but you can't be your own boss in your own district. And there are some other positions designated by law that are not compatible. You can't hold this position and be on the school board at the same time. There are few, and they create infrequent issues for folks. These are really important positions. You know, we take them for granted. You know, it's a shame, this year, except for the other odd-numbered year, which immediately follows the presidential election, which is the worst year, we'll have miserable turnout. People will get elected to school board positions with the support of ten percent of the eligible voters in their community. You know, we, voters, we're guilty of not paying attention to this stuff, and underestimating the points I try to make here. They're unpaid. I think we all smile a little bit when some people shows up at a school board meeting and says, "I pay you," or "I'm gonna have your salary cut." Like I said, some people go through this program that we do occasionally and say, "I don't wanna do this. I'm not gonna make that kind of commitment." It is not one night a month. It's an enormous commitment. It's unicameral. It's not like the legislature or the Congress, if, you know, the House messes it up, the Senate will clean it up. There's nobody else to clean it up, and there's no veto. The superintendent can't veto what the school board does. The school board messes it up, it's the policy there. Together, and this is an old number, our boards in Pennsylvania spend more than thirty-five billion dollars of federal, state, local money. There are important local control issues. One of the most important is, school boards decide what the value of that piece of paper is if we have one of those high school departments here. The board decides what it means, what it's telling the kid, the parents, the employer, the college admissions officer, the military recruiter. You get to decide the value of that piece of paper. And I think some boards take that very, very seriously, and others maybe take it a little less serious, they spend less time focused on it. What does it mean? It shapes the well-being and reputation of the community. I just saw before I came over here today, 'cause I'd been away for a few days, the local paper, I'm not sure, it's probably a week old now, but on the front page, Franklin Regional named one of the top high schools in the state and nation. It's a US News and World Report kind of stuff. But I think eighth in the region, and twenty-something statewide. Bragging rights. Now, that's one report, US News and World Report, one assessment, but at the end of the day, the work of that board and its implications for everything that's going on in that district has implications for the reputation of the community. Again, I'm seventy-six, I get into occasional discussion with folks my age about why we should pay school taxes. Yeah, I gladly pay school taxes. I didn't know that it enhances the value of my home, but it's also gonna prepare the kid who's gonna take care of me in the next ten or twenty-five years as well, or pilot my plane, or not, I don't have a plane, pilot the plane I'm on, or whatever. And it certainly, and policymakers are paying more attention to this last point, it's shaping our regional workforce. You know, it's clear, in southwestern Pennsylvania, Westmoredon County for sure, but statewide as well, we have a shortage of skilled workers, and that is leading some employers to decide, "We can't count on that part of Pennsylvania or Pennsylvania to provide skilled workforce, we're gonna go some other place." And that has implications for our county, for our region, certainly for our state. So, I think that's an important consideration when we talk about why these are important positions. Major duties. This is my list. I think the most important thing a board does is select a superintendent, and then choose to treat that superintendent like a CEO. Makes no sense at all, and I've been around these circumstances where the board hires a superintendent and then says, "And here's the list of principals that we want you to have, and here's the business officer," and, you know, and they wanna make all the decisions. That's not the way you treat the CEO. You gotta treat them like a CEO, and then hold that superintendent accountable for performance. But if you don't treat them like the CEO, you can't hold them accountable. Adopt policies to recruit. This is more important than maybe in years past. It's always been important, but in this situation where we have teacher shortage now in Pennsylvania, where we have our current teachers and superintendents telling their kids, "Don't do this, go do something else. This environment is bad." This is more important than, than I can remember, having strategies and implementing effective strategies about recruiting and retaining, and you do that through supporting effective core of teachers and other support staff. Deciding what kind of academic and non-academic opportunities kids are gonna have. Is there gonna be an advanced placement course? Is there gonna be some language other than Spanish? Is there, you know, go on, you can, you know, is there gonna be a chess club, a forensics society, a football team? What kind of opportunities are kids gonna have? On the academic side, again, just my opinion, but, you know, I've said this in a lot of audiences, given what we have now in terms of technology, you know, if there is one kid in your district that wants the most advanced math program, or one kid that wants to learn, pick a language, pick any language, one kid, we have the capacity to make that program available to that kid or those kids. We don't do it, and there are reasons, you know, that are offered up, usually around money, or other logistics, or frankly, sometimes a teacher reunion position. But why should, if this is gonna be a kid-oriented operation, why don't we offer every kid the opportunity to take whatever they want to within their academic ability? Logistically, there's, there's no reason to not do it. What do we mean by success? You know, we all want kids to be ready for success, you know, speech after speech. What does that mean, though? What do we mean by success? What do we mean by ready? Military recruiters, that I have a chance to sit with occasionally, and one of them is a retired colonel from the Army War College, so I spent some time there and do a program at the War College. They can't find the kids who are ready, either academically, or because of the drug use. They can't fill the ranks of the military. Support health and safety, approve contracts, set the budget, act as trustees for the system. This is not just about running it today. It's about, what is this system gonna look like in our community for that group of kids who were just born last week, or who haven't been born yet, but are gonna be our students in five, six, seven, eight years? This idea of being a trustee for the system, having some obligations. A reminder, a school board member has no individual authority. No matter what you promised in the campaign, and you probably need to be careful about promising in the campaign, you got no individual authority. That's why some people serve a couple months, or a year or two, and decide that they can't do what they thought they were gonna do. Ideally, the best districts, superintendent and the board work as a team of ten. There's all kinds of literature about that in the National and the State Associations, representing superintendents and representing school boards. Sunshine Law applies, there are few exceptions, but very few, and there's good reason for those exceptions around personnel and real estate, et cetera. Select a superintendent, that was at the top of my list. Make policy focused on students. There was the Iowa Project, I don't know, maybe fifteen years ago already, but it looked at the work of school boards, and that was the emphasis, that was the report nationally, focus on students. Plan and set goals, hire and fire staff. Adopt a budget. Those bottom two create some confusion sometimes. A bunch of years ago, I was asked to do some work with a large school district in a large, or, yeah, a board in a large school district in western Pennsylvania. You can imagine what it would be. And there was a newly-elected board member who came and said, "I don't understand why the superintendent is telling us who ought to be the principal. You know, this school is in my district, my piece of the school district. I should pick the superintendent." You know, and she pointed to the hired and fired staff, language of the code. So, there's language in the code that creates confusion sometimes, too, but in a well-operating district, it's the superintendent who makes those decisions. Yeah, the law still says the board has to act. Same thing about adopting a budget. That same young person said, "Why is the superintendent giving us a budget here, you know, at this point in the year?" Pointed to the same language about adopting a budget. So, that's why especially this team of ten idea is, is important. Again, just a reminder about some of the work, for those of you who've been on boards know this well. Adopt instructional programs, facility needs. Engage the community, that's more and more challenging. And engaging parents, I'll, you know, I'll include that under there. Senator Jim Rhodes, who has passed, Republican chair of the Senate Ed Committee, used to annually introduce legislation to promote parent engagement. And I was with his daughter a couple months ago, and I said, on the one hand, Jim would be pleased, but on the other hand, he too would be wondering, is this the kind of parent engagement that we were hoping for? You know, I'm not suggesting it's any good or bad, I'm saying it's more complicated, and boards need to figure out, how do you engage a community in a civil way, where you listen, and listen? Some people go to school board member, uh, school board meetings and expect they're gonna engage in a debate with the school board. You don't do that. A smart board doesn't get sucked into that. But how do you engage the community? To advocate, to adjudicate, that's an important thing, too. Some of you, I'm sure, have, have sat on, sat on boards where you had to make a decision about a student being expelled, or about a firing. You don't get involved early in the process, because somewhere down the road, you're gonna have to act in, in this role of adjudicating. So, it's important to remind folks about that. Establish board operating guidelines and provide for continuous board experience. So, you know, even locally, provide for professional development of the school board, especially around new people, but not only around new people. What they don't do, you don't check out the staff, you don't inspect for code compliance, you don't tend, you don't tend to parent-teacher meetings with the parents, you don't tell the parents, "I'm gonna take care of it." You don't go around instructing the staff. And the worst thing, if any of you have been in business or any workplace, you don't need two bosses. You don't need superintendent telling you what to do, or your principal telling you what to do, then having a board member tell you what you ought to be doing as well. That's just not a good way to run the ship, and it's not fair to any staff person. Other roles, intermediate units. Served on the intermediate unit board one time. It is what it, in some states, are called regional agencies. Intermediate unit kind of sits between the school districts and the state. A lot different than it was part of nineteen ninety-one, when they basically did special education. Now, they are quite entrepreneurial. The, the executive director of the Westmoredon IU was one of our fellows last year, Jason Conway, and, you know, it's interesting for me to learn what was happening with the Westmoredon IU. Career tech centers. School districts can work together around career tech programs, and create centers, and fund them, and send kids to them. Some school districts choose to operate their own career tech program in-house, others have some kind of a hybrid situation. Community colleges. Under the law, community colleges can be created by school districts, working together, or counties, or other entities. Westmoredon County is not the school district we're all here. And charter schools. I think I've got some other material on charter schools, but it's a major responsibility of school districts. In some places, it is much more awesome or onerous, depending on your view of responsibility. Certainly creating a financial responsibility of districts, because districts write a check for every kid who lives in a district who attends a charter school, whether that charter school is in your district, or off in cyber someplace. But those four items call into question, or call into issue, other responsibilities of school boards. Yeah, I did have a little bit more about the IUs. Increasingly, there are service agencies. They've become much more entrepreneurial, some more so than others, but they are dependent on their funding increasingly from fees paid by districts who ask services of them. Those services can include special ed, but they can include superintendent searches, they can include recruiting, they can include, in some places, shared staff, where more districts, two or more districts through the IU are sharing staff. They operate some programs for the state. As the state Department of Education payroll has shrunk from what was well over a thousand people back in the Thornburg years, to about five hundred now, half of, more than half of whom are paid for federal dollars, by the way. The Department of Ed has found it necessary to farm out some work, contract work through intermediate units. They're governed by school board members who come from the member districts, and if you want more information, there's a website for the intermediate unit organization. If you wanna do some additional searching for information, we put out a report back in two thousand and four, so it's almost twenty years old. But, you know, I looked at it for another program just a couple months ago. It's remarkable how much of the stuff we said in that report is still relevant, on point, not acted upon. That's the, the bad news side of it. But there is a report of strengthening the work of school boards in Pennsylvania, and I think I got a slide or two that highlight a couple of things. Yeah, I'm gonna mention this. You know, since, uh, school board members, you know, they're torn in these different directions. They're representatives of the state, the state agents, but they're representatives of the people that elected them in four hundred and ninety-nine districts. They're also, folks don't talk about this so much, they're trustees for this education system. This is not about just running the district today, as I said earlier, but also, the fourth point, they're intermediaries. They're stuck in the middle with all this stuff. You know, they gotta be the agent, but they gotta be the representative, but they gotta be looking down the road about, what is this community gonna need? How's the workforce gonna be best served in this area, et cetera, all those important We made some recommendations to boards and superintendents. We made some recommendations to boards and superintendents. I'm not going to read all this stuff because we're getting close to, close to 7:30. But that, provide every new member with orientation. Some boards still don't do that, some districts still don't do that. We swear you in early in December, pat you on the back, congratulate you, tell you to elect new officers of the board. We made some recommendations to voters and community leaders as well. At first point, you know, I try to emphasize that. One of the reasons I do this stuff, this is important stuff that you guys are doing or considering doing or helping with, and we need more folks, particularly community leaders, business community, to speak up and talk about how this is important. Yeah, and there may be a little politics involved with it, some of the issues are difficult, but they're important. But anymore, you know, in this current environment we have, you know, God bless the people who are willing to put their name on a ballot anymore. You know, the current environment is awful. It's awful, the way we treat people, we treat one another, we treat candidates. We, you know, I've been, I've been a debater since I was 12 years old in high school. So, you know, having a good argument is not something that I am unaccustomed to, but I learned a long time ago how to respect the other person even as you argue. We have forgotten a lot of that, and so often, it seems to me, and this is just my opinion, but we're driven by what somebody else thinks we ought to be doing, and that's shaping our behavior, and we've lost our independence and our good sense. And then the local media, we made some recommendations there about fair coverage. Oh, didn't move. Until 2017, six years ago already, school board members didn't have to do professional development. Everybody else in the system did, teachers, counselors, everybody else, but the folks who were making the important decisions weren't required to do any development. So now there is some modest professional development that's required. Pennsylvania School Boards Association does a lot of it, they do a good job with it. Their position, when you were on a school board, the position was they were against professional development.
Probably yes.
They were, absolutely, because Tom Gensel and I had those discussions. They, by resolution, that organization was against professional development. Well, they finally came around, began to recognize the value of it, and now are the major provider of this professional development that is required. Let me know one other thing, but it's not on here, but I'm reminded of it, about this issue of qualifications. I said you've got to be 18. Sometimes folks debate, you know, should we have more requirements to serve on a school board? You know, should we require people to have a high school diploma, or a degree in this or that, or whatever? I've always been against that stuff. I think it's a bad idea. You know, one, you can be president of this country just as long as you're 35. The other bias that I have, some of the dumbest people I've ever met have all kinds of initials behind their name, and some of the smartest people I've ever met, including my own father, they graduated my school. So I've always been against those kind of artificial requirements. So a few policy questions. What should be the balance between the federal, the state, and the local? Do we need 500 districts? What should the prerequisites be? What's the appropriate roles? What are the roles? What's the balance between superintendent and board? And how should the school board be held accountable? For what? And to what end? And what are the consequences? There's a group in Pittsburgh called A-plus Schools, they work primarily in the Pittsburgh School District. And a whole bunch of years ago, when they were relatively new, they had a board watch project, and it may still go on, but I, they asked me to help them think through some ideas. First question I had was, what are you watching for? You know, because back then, you know, there were people who were upset with the board because there were, some people were going out for a smoke break, they weren't being nice to one another, I mean, there were all kinds of issues. But, you know, the question was, what are you watching for? What are you going to hold them accountable for? I mean, that remains a really important decision. And that's my phone telling me that it's 7:30. Let me run through some other things just quickly. School choices. You know, this choice debate that we read so much about, so often gets characterized as, are you for vouchers or not? My friends in the public school community have heard me say this for more than 20 years. I think the public school committee made a terrible decision, and maybe it wasn't so much a decision, it was just something that happened, but they let the non-public school community capture the language of choice. While the reality is, and again, this is the word for school board, most of the choices that are available to most of the kids are available in the public school system. You know, it ranges from, you know, well, you've got to, you've got to send your kids to school or provide for homeschooling, but the public school choices, the charter school choices within the public school community, magnet schools, cyber schools, career tech ed, dual enrollment, you know, my two oldest grandkids, you know, went to college with already one term earned before they graduated because of the great community college here. Say their parents and them, a term worth of time and money. My grandson was able to graduate in my U of B after three and a half years. My granddaughter, right now, is a second-term junior down at Point Park because of dual enrollment. Vouchers, you know, that's part of the debate that gets the most attention. What sometimes is ignored is the fact that in Pennsylvania, we provide more support to kids in non-public schools than most states in the country. And those policies, for the most part, existed before I got to the legislature in 1974, '75. You know, just a reminder, and this was tested all the way to the US Supreme Court, and the test then could change, but the test then was, you're giving the help to the kids, not to the school. So we loan books and materials to kids in non-public schools. That's the work of the intermediate units. We provide them some other support services, it might be counseling, it might be nurses, et cetera, but it's to the kid, not to the school. And we've got Act 372 that provides transportation to kids, excuse me, in non-public schools within 10 miles of the border of their district. And, you know, that's, that's a pretty significant contribution, and that obligation of transport has been extended to kids who are charter schools now. So kids who live outside of the district, attending a charter school, but within 10 miles have a right to get transportation from their school district, provided that the school district is providing transportation to other public school kids in the district. If it's a district that provides no transportation to its usual public school kids, then the obligation is generalizing, but it's mostly around special education or special needs kids. Just a couple of other quick reminders, and then, let me see if I can walk less here. Just a reminder about the charter schools. School districts have to pay for the kids who live in a district who attend a charter school. There was a time in the early 2000s when the state recognized that this meant some additional cost to school districts, and the state was reimbursing up to 30%. It never got to 30%, it got to about 23%, but it was eliminated 2011, 2012. That was one of the casualties. I just remind you, because this is getting more and more like old history, but in 2011, school districts took a $954 million cut in terms of state support. The aid, the reimbursement for kids, for the costs related to charter schools was one of the things that got cut. It was about $223 million that year, if I remember, it was cut. But it all added up to $954 million, and I don't know the numbers for West Morton, but I'll tell you, in Allegheny County, which made that cut so awful, a lot of it not yet restored. The poorest school districts in Allegheny County lost more than $1,000 per kid. The richest school districts in Allegheny County lost less than $100 per kid. It was by, because of the nature of the programs that got cut. Tutoring programs, this reimbursement program, and the like. So reminder, school districts have got to balance the budget. Those of you on school boards, you know the frustration, the challenges, except for a couple of districts that have different fiscal years. You've got to balance the budget by June 30th. In a lot of years, you have no idea what you're getting from the state that year, but you still have the obligation to have a balanced budget. Now, usually the legislature gives some latitude during the summer months, or the fall months, or whenever, for you to go in and reopen budgets, but it's a challenge. You don't know what you're going to get from the state, you don't know whether you're going to get what the governor proposed, or what the legislature proposed, or nothing at all, which happened only once, and then in 2011, you got that big cut. But you've got to have a balanced budget. So the unpredictability. More accountability for student achievement. We're still really cheap, and, you know, I say, I use this word deliberately because I know it gets under the skin of some folks. The state is cheap about supporting K-12 education. By the way, we're also cheap about supporting higher education. We rank 48th or 49th in this country in terms of state appropriations per capita or per $1,000 of personal income, but that's the higher ed story, and that's part of the reason why we have some of the highest tuition, and therefore, some of the highest student indebtedness in the country. But going back to K-12. So a lot of these costs have been driving up. State got out of the construction business, providing assistance to districts. There are proposals to get back in, but districts aren't holding their breath, and districts that can afford it, this exacerbates the inequity issue, or the inequity problem. Districts that can afford it are going ahead with their construction projects because they don't know when, if, the state will come through, and costs are just going up the longer you wait. Special ed, again, that $2 billion figure on the bottom is more like $3 billion. We've, the state has shifted about $3 billion of annual expenses from what had been the responsibility of the state to school districts. So, you know, the analogy I use is, like, I, as a homeowner, like, you know, probably most of you, I like to pay my bills. I want to look good, I want to pay my bills. So I pay all the bills this year, and next year, if things are a little tough, I'm going to have you pay my gas bill. I still have a balanced budget, I'm looking good. The next year, you're going to pay my electric bill. I'm still looking good with my balanced budget. That's part of the reason the state has been looking good by shifting $3 billion annually of responsibility for special ed to school districts. That's been building since 1991. Consolidation of districts. I already described the Woodin Hills District, those two districts in Beaver County that voluntarily combined. You can still do it, but the reality is, one lawmaker, state legislators, think it's like cutting your political risk, you know, to mandate any of this stuff, or to redesign, so not likely to happen soon. I think we're going to see a lot more, and that's a type of, that should not be physical consolidation, that should be functional consolidation. We're going to see, and we have, the intermediate unit is an example of that. It's a manifestation of this idea of functionally consolidating, functionally cooperating. Not likely to see much structural consolidation. Can you save money? The state senate commissioned a study that's now getting close to 10 years old. They asked the question, can we save money if we would consolidate? And it was Standard and Poor that did the study at the behest of a state agency. They came back with 70 recommendations where two districts could combine, still have a population of less than 3,000, and save money. Nothing has happened with any of that stuff. I also thought that they asked an incomplete question. I thought the question ought to be, can you save money, but also, can you create more equitable opportunities for kids? And I'm almost down to the last slide or two here. We've got well over 300 school districts, probably closer to 400 now, that have foundations, and I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of your community foundations. Some of them are tiny, some of them are large. What they do varies, some of them are doing mini grants. One of them in the Harrisburg area helped construct a, an art center as part of an elementary school. So it depends on the resources that are available. Two cautions. One, this stuff should not replace, or take the place of, a sound, effective statewide school funding system. This is not instead of appropriate state funding. And secondly, if you stop and think about it, there is the risk that dependency here can make worse the inequity. The rich districts can have all kinds of fancy grant programs, et cetera. Poor districts, they may not even have a foundation.